Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Liberty Middle School. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Liberty Middle School. And welcome to Board of Ed Meeting. Tonight, we are presenting our budget. Preliminary budget, yes. Mr. Calavano, roll call, please.
Before the roll call, I'd just like to go over the order of the agenda this evening. We're going to have a budget presentation, then we will have board discussion, and then we will open up for petitions and hearings of the citizens. At that time, you can ask questions on a budget or any other topic, and then the board will actually vote on the budget. Roll call? Mr. Charles?
Present.
Mr. Lab?
Here.
Mr. Mordecai?
Present.
Mr. Robertson?
Present.
Ms. Fortsbaum?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is that in the United States of America, we are a very solid, faithful, one nation, under God, and in the world, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Notice of meeting, please take notice. That adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on March 14, 2017. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk, and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle, and a Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby in the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. Mr. Rutske, I'll now turn the meeting over to you to do the preliminary budget presentation.
Thank you. If I can just ask the board members to sit in the front row. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Liberty Middle School for our preliminary budget presentation. I just want to recognize for those that may not know all the board members. Mr. Mordecai is the President. Mr. Fortsbaum is the Vice President. Ms. Lab, Mr. Charles, and Mr. Robertson are the other three board members. Standing over to your right and my left is John Calavano, the Business Administrator and Board Secretary. We'll begin with a little bit of education. We want to make sure that everybody understands some of the terms that are used quite often throughout the budget, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Calavano to go through those terms.
Good evening. So, we have, our first term is bank cap. It's unused tax levy in a given year, and you have three years to actually utilize it. So what that means, each year, we're able to increase our tax levy by 2%. So if you don't go to 2%, that remaining balance gets put in the bank for you to use the next three years. If you don't use it within the next three years, then you lose it. It expires. And what that means is that that gives you the ability to go above the 2%. It doesn't mean that it's cash from the state. What it means is that you can increase your budget by that difference in addition to your 2% each year, but it also increases the tax levy by that amount. Capital reserve, it's another fund. It's a reserved fund for capital projects. So two ways of funding this. One, during budget time, like we are now, you can actually deposit money into that fund. Or, at the end of the year, if you have excess funds that come out of that school year, you can actually deposit that into capital reserve. Unfortunately, with our budget now, we can't make any deposits in it at this point, but at year-end, if there's additional funds that we can pull from this school year, we can actually deposit in there. It's used for capital projects. Currently, unfortunately, our balance in that fund is about $4,000. We have capital outlay, debt service, general fund. Those are three pieces of the budget. So we have our operating budget. It's a general fund. We have a special revenue fund, which is not listed up here, but it's for restricted aid that we receive from the state, and it's for a certain purpose. So we can't use that for the operating budget. These are programs that we actually have to provide to supplement what we're doing, not supplanting what we're actually doing in the district. And then we have our capital outlay, and these are projects or equipment that's valued over $2,000. Fund balance, that's the amount of money that's reserved as surplus. So each school district's allowed to carry 2%. For our 2%, that equates to about $3 million. In our situation, by coming up with the $3 million each year, we were able to put in the budget $2.1 million as a revenue source. So each year, for the last several years, we counted on $2.1 million to put into the budget. This year, we were not able to put $2.1 in. At year-end, last year, we had $1.8 million total. So what we're doing this year is we're putting half of that reserve, $900,000. So that means our surplus, or our fund balance currently, is only going to be $900,000. And in the school tax levy, that's the amount that's going to be raised for taxes, and then the tax rate.
Mr. Calavano, before you move on, explain how surplus is utilized in emergencies.
Well, if you have an emergency during the school year, and if you don't have funds for that emergency, and it's something that's not covered by insurance or any other item that we can cover within the budget, we're able to, by resolution, pull the money out of surplus and fund that expenditure. The other item you'd like, I mean, the other reason why you would like to have some surplus is payroll. There's a point in time in June where the state does not cover all of our state aid payments. They actually defer into the next school year. So we need those funds so we can make payroll.
Okay. And an example would be last year when we had the issue of Gregory Elementary School in the library where the roof, portion of the roof collapsed. We had the water damage, et cetera. That was money, the insurance covered that, but that would be an example if it didn't, where we would have to pull that surplus out and utilize that and get that room operating again very quickly. Okay, so we're talking about the timeline now, so everybody is aware of the timeline. Tonight is March 22nd. We're presenting the preliminary budget. Tomorrow, the budget has to be submitted from Mr. Calavano to the county for their approval. They have until April 24th to approve the budget and notify Mr. Calavano, and then we will have our final budget presentation on May 1st. And again, that meeting will be here on May 1st. There's a lot of factors that go into planning for a school budget, a lot of factors, and I've listed them here. Safety and security being number one, student achievement being number two, curriculum instruction. And there's no order here after the first two. Safety and security is always number one, student achievement is 1A. So it's 1A, 1B. Curriculum instruction, special education, class size, enrollment projections, staffing projections, program offerings, technology, extracurricular, and athletics. Health benefits, salaries, contracts, debt service, facilities and maintenance, transportation, mandated programs, professional development, and supplies are things that we have to always be planning for, for the next year's budget. One of the other things that school districts, public school districts are required to do is to find opportunities for shared services. We have shared services with the Morris Union Jointure. We do a lot of professional development with them. We work hand-in-hand with the township, getting price reduction on things such as salt and fuel and other areas that help us with our budget. In exchange for that, the Rec Department, Mountaineer, Mountaintop, they're utilizing the facilities across the district at no charge, so it's one taking care of the other. We utilize the high school cafeteria, Tarnoff Cafeteria, for emergency situations throughout, not only West Orange, but throughout the county. And there's been a lot of work and opportunities for us to offer when there are needs. We have the Sussex County Regional Transportation. Many districts utilize them, and it's a bidding service that we have to go through. The Ed Data Services, we order a lot of our supplies because we get a better rate by going through them. Educational Services, the Hunterdon County Educational Services, and Essex Regional Educational Services are all areas that we can work with them on getting better pricing for different items. And then, lastly, the New Jersey State Contracts, where they also are approved, and when they're approved, we can go ahead and utilize those companies that have state contracts.
Mr. Rutske, I just want to touch on Ed Data Services.
Sure.
It's a consortium up north where I think about 425 school districts join. They put all their supplies together, and then they go out to bid, and there's multiple vendors that are bidding against, you know, against other vendors with the same item. And by having 425 school districts and all the buildings they have within each school district, you have great purchasing power. So we really enjoy a great rate when those bids come in.
I want to move on, and every year I talk about this, and every year it seems to grow, and those are the unfunded mandates that are passed down to school districts. And there are many more than what are on these next two slides, but the PERS contribution, the Park, and everything made up of the Park. And remember that, you know, we're continuing to try to upgrade our devices and provide more of them, so the Park is not a huge interruption to the instructional year. The quicker we can get Park done, the better it is for those lost days, that first year. Those of us that suffered through that was a real struggle, and the state made some adjustments, thank goodness. But special ed, these are mandated special ed issues that we have to follow. We don't have a choice. That are passed down, those funds are passed down to the district. The HIB and all of the components of the HIB, professional development, that is required from the Department of Ed. The one below that, which we currently utilize, the Marsano Model, again, is required. There's cost behind that. And just those simple six are over $3 million, 3.4, and that's an approximate number. But again, when we're talking about a very challenging budget like we are tonight, 3.4 million dollars will go a long way and would certainly help all of us. The next couple of slides, I'm going to have Mr. Calavano address, and the first one is the revenue.
So here's the revenue for the district. Local tax levy being the largest at 90%. This is not unique in West Orange. You'll see this across the state. State aid, 8.5 million dollars. That stayed flat. It's been flat for years, so we didn't expect an increase, but thank God we didn't get a decrease. Federal and state restricted aid, that's special revenue, so that's outside and above and beyond our operating budget. These are funds that we receive for a certain purpose. We have to apply for them, has to be used for that purpose, and again, it's to supplement the programs, not supplant the programs. And also included in that, we get a lot of non-public funding. So we get non-public technology, security aid, textbooks, nursing. That all runs through our budget, so that's in that 2.9 million dollars. Budget of fund balance, I spoke about that earlier. Previously, we were able to put 2.1, now we have only 900,000. And tuition and miscellaneous, so we receive students that are placed in our district by the state. We receive funding from the state. In addition, the little interest that we earn each month is accumulated, and that's considered a revenue category. We have some Medicaid reimbursed for certain special education services, and we also receive funds for building rentals. When we rent out our buildings, we consider that as one of the categories for our revenues. So we have a total revenue of 146.9 million dollars, and again, that's the operating budget and a special revenue budget. Here we have the operating fund expenditures. Again, not unique in West Orange. The majority of the budget for a school district is salary and benefits. We have salaries at 63%, and we have benefits at 15.8. When you total them together, it's 79% of our budget. We have special edu, and then when I talk about salaries, that salary's across the board. Transportation, special ed, every single category, every single salary that we have in the district. The rest of the categories, you'll see, the salary's been pulled out because we added it to the total salary. So special ed, that does include transportation, but again, no salaries, 11.4. Then we have transportation, which also includes non-public. We have to provide transportation for non-public schools. Our first obligation is to get that transportation. And if we can get that transportation for $884 or less per student, then we provide that transportation. If we cannot, then we have to actually pay parents $884 per year, and that's considered aid in lieu of. Then we have operations, maintenance, security, instructional support, charter school. We have $182,000 going to charter schools. We have 11 students attending five charter schools. So we have 11 students living in West Orange that's attending five charter schools. We actually have to pay tuition over to that charter school, and it comes out of our operating budget within our 2% increase in our tax levy.
Mr. Calavano, one comment about charter schools. Many times, families are currently attending charter schools, and they move into a community. The family decides to allow the child to continue in that charter school, so the community school district has to pick up the remaining balance of that charter school tuition for that year, and if the parent, again, chooses to, the district has to pay for that. It's not something that we have an opportunity to negotiate. The issue is, somebody moves in, if they choose not to come to the schools and stay in the charter school, we don't have the opportunity to negotiate that.
And I actually see a lot of charter school students. We have a lot of teachers that may live in town that teach at a charter school. They'll bring that child with them to school, and, you know, then therefore, they involve this child into the charter school. We have to pay for the tuition. And then we have our capital outlay, which I indicated earlier, for equipment that's valued over $2,000 or any construction project, major construction project, but also in that 466,000, we have 115,000 set aside for what is called an SDA assessment. That's Schools Development Authority Assessment. Years ago, we received grant funding for some of the projects, the construction projects that we had in the district. We received 40% from the district. Because of that, now they're coming back to us and say, okay, we're going to assess you, I say, a penalty for having that grant, because they need help now to pay back the funds they borrowed. So now we're assessed at 115,000 dollars. Bank cap. So here, you can see what our allowable cap is. It's in the green. We can go as far as 133, 615, 444. And what the blue represents, it represents our 2% increase. So again, this is bank cap that we had in, sitting in the bank. I can tell you, these are funds that came from the 2015-16 school year and the 16-17 school year. We had 1.3 million dollars that we went below cap in 15-16, since we went below the 2% cap that was put in the bank to reserve for us. And in 16-17, we had a statutory growth adjustment for health benefits, and I'll explain those adjustments in a minute, of 823,000. So the combination of the two represents 2.185 that we can actually utilize this year or next year. We had, back in 13-14, we had about $842,000 that was in the bank cap, but again, it's only good for three years. So that actually expired the school year we're in now, the 16-17 school year. So we don't have access to those funds, and it's not even funds, to that amount that we're able to increase our cap by. Talking about some of the adjustments. There's three adjustments that school districts can apply for. One is an automatic that the Department of Education does an enrollment projection, and if you go over a certain percentage, then they'll actually give you an increase in your 2% cap. We haven't qualified for that, so that's off the table for us. We have, there's an adjustment for an increase in healthcare costs. So after working out the calculation, they look at our current, they increase it by 2%, and then they look at what the percentage increase is for state health benefits. So after through the calculation, if you're eligible for health benefit costs, then you can actually increase your 2% by that amount. We did the calculation this year, we're zero, so we have no ability to increase based on the healthcare cost. We have one other one for deferral. So years ago, school districts had an opportunity to defer some of the pension liability, and if you're able, if you chose that option, you're able to take an adjustment, but it's really over to 2%. So we don't qualify for that one either. So at this point, the only addition that we can take to our 2% cap would be the bank cap. And after we utilize all the bank cap this year, we'll have zero left in bank cap. Next year, we'll see if we're eligible for any of these adjustments. Sorry. Here's the total tax levy. So there's two pieces. One is a general fund, that's the operating budget of 133, and one is debt service, 5.7. Debt service, the projects that were previously approved, and it's like your mortgage at your home, you know, you're going to pay your principal interest each year or each month. This is our liability for the debt service fund. Here we have a tax levy comparison. So we're showing you, general fund, the operating budget, went up 3.70%. That represents the 2% increase that we're allowed to take, plus the 2.1 million dollars in bank cap. Debt service, we had 5 million, and then we're going actually up to 5.7. So the tax levy's increasing by 717,000 dollars. So there's a reason for that. Years ago, back in 2007, when we had projects eligible for that grant funding I told you about with the SDA assessment, so at that point, we were eligible for 40% of grants for certain projects. So we accepted that. We collected the 40%. And then, what happened is, once you have some eligible projects, you're supposed to report it to the DOE. It was reported to the DOE, but it was reported incorrectly. It was reported as we seek, that we wanted to receive debt service aid and that we were not eligible for the 40% of the grant. So the Department of Education just did an audit, and we happened to be chosen as one of the lucky, and they determined that we've been overpaid for projects that we received the grant funding back from 2007. So we now have to pay back the state 1.2 million dollars. Usually, they want it the next year. I was able to negotiate with them that they take it over the next three years. So that's part of the reason why you see the 717,000. In addition to that, the projects that we were, that we actually received funding for in 16-17, they're no longer on our books because we received the grant of funding for it. That's another reason why it's less this year. And then we had, when we did some refunding of the current debt, we were able to have savings from that, and we used it for the 16-17 school year. We don't have too many funds remaining for the 16, I mean, for the 17 and 18. So that's the bulk of the reason why 14.36 increased in debt service. So our overall total tax levy increased by 4.09%. Here's a good example on how the taxes are raised. We have, based on taxes, based on a calendar year, January through June, I mean, January through December, and we have two school years within that. So we have January to June of the old school year, and we have the new school year, July to December. So here's half of each of the tax levies. So the amount of taxes that need to be raised for 2017 is 136.5 million dollars.
Thanks, Mr. Calavano. Okay, so we're going to go through some slides now, talking about things that the budget will add. We're starting with a kindergarten teacher at Redwood. We have a situation where there are a lot of students in Redwood, we know that. We also have an abundance of kindergarteners coming in that we need to adjust our levels. And with that, we want to make sure we try to keep those numbers where we always do 20 or below. We also are adding a STEM teacher at both Liberty and Roosevelt. We're trying to make sure the electives are exciting for the kids in the middle school, making sure that they're aligning themselves and getting ready for the high school. We did this, this current year that we're in, with the sixth grade, and it has gone very well. The students are very excited about the STEM class, and we will continue this, so they will move right up into seventh grade and eighth grade as well. And a high school program is currently a very fine program, and that will certainly prepare them in a different way, so when they step into high school, for the preparedness for STEM. We need also to get a biology teacher at the high school. Right now, again, we have growing enrollment in our biology, and we are covering them with teachers that are teaching other classes. So we call that an overage. They're taking a class, a teacher has a maximum load, and another teacher is covering the class. We need to make sure that that's rectified for next school years. We have a biology teacher need at the high school. We also are looking at a program, a preschool program, that would allow us to remove the preschool, majority of preschool, from Pleasantale to another location in West Orange that we are still working with that organization, and allow us to get some relief as far as our overcrowding in Pleasantale, and, excuse me, in Kelly. And you know that this is one of the district's initiatives and goals, is to evaluate the elementary overcrowding. So we have the demographer in place doing the work currently, and then we will put the architect in place to look at what's called a capacity study of each school. And that capacity study will allow us to know what are state-approved classrooms and subs, they called substandard classrooms. We will then have an understanding of exactly the enrollment capacity for each school, and then look at how many kids are in the school compared to how many should be in the school. We also have the issue of 15-year-old trailers that are in three of our elementary schools, Gregory, Redwood, and Washington, that if you have been in those trailers, you understand that they, their life is coming to an end, and we need to address that issue. We need to make sure that we have kids in proper classrooms. So we have a very serious need at the elementary level. At the middle school and high school level is a different story. We do have some capacity in Edison. We also have capacity here and Roosevelt and the high school. So we're in better shape with those four schools, but we're not in good shape as far as our overcrowding at the elementary. And for those that are elementary teachers in this room tonight, you certainly know what I'm talking about. We would need the principal to take care of that preschool program and those students who are going to be in that program, as well as a custodian. Now, Monday night, when I was discussing options with the board, we had a couple of other positions that are going to now be a wash. And the other two positions were an administrative assistant that was needed for the preschool, and obviously, we had some administrative assistants on the list to be cut and reduced. So that's going to be a wash, so one of those positions are out of that mix right now. And then we also had a nursing position that is needed for our preschool, and again, that was one of the cuts, and that will be taken as well. So that is, we call that a wash for those two positions. So those are the positions that are being added to the budget this year. New programs, courses, and materials include calculus for our 11th and 12th graders, college math for 11 and 12, culinary arts 11, 12, dance 2. If you remember, last year, we began the dance program. It's very successful in high school, and the enrollment is up for a dance 2 class, so those students can continue to progress through. We have the requirement from the new science standards that we have to begin a program as of September. So we are purchasing a program that aligns to the next-gen science standards. Ms. Soriano and many elementary teachers have been working. We have two pilots going on as we speak right now to determine which program would be the best for the elementary school. And then lastly, we talked about the STEM, and that's going to be added to our 7th and 8th grade buildings. We always need to have professional development in a lot of different areas, so I've listed some of those areas, and obviously, there's other areas. But under English Language Arts, we continue to work with the Readers and Writers Workshop, our guided reading, our literacy utilizing novels, our foundations program, which is in its first year currently, and hearing a lot of very positive comments about how it's really helping with our phonics and fluency development, and then our Fontis and Penel reading program, program at our K5, continuing to work on the PD through the Fontis and Penel. the Fontis and Penel. It really gives us quality data to look at how kids are doing as far as their reading abilities. We talked about the K5 science program that is needed, and the K12, next-generation science standards. We need to continue, last year, excuse me, this year, we're required to have it six through 12, to have the implementation done. We have done that, and, but it takes at least three to five years before we really get it where we need it, when you put a new program in. And again, this is something that has been pushed down to the districts. It is a very, the standards are very fine. They are exactly what we needed in science. Obviously, anything that's new is very hard, but there's a wonderful opportunity here to change how students are learning through science. And then again, mentioning the STEM and continuing to work, we have a phenomenal program of tech ed in the high school, science programs in the high school. We are now pushing that down to the middle schools. Next year, we will have it in seven and eight, and then the ultimate goal is to continue to push it down to our elementaries. And there is some work being done currently in the elementaries. We just need to make sure that it's across all the schools and all the levels. We're moving into the math area, making sure that we have the pre-algebra and algebra readiness. We know that that's the number-one indicator for math success. We want to make sure that we continue to emphasize the pre-algebra and algebra readiness, and then looking and analyzing those new courses we're putting in at the high school level. Now, just to make sure everybody understands why we're putting those courses in, we want to make sure that kids do not get blocked out of the higher-level courses throughout. So we want to offer students lots of options to take math courses that they want to take and that will prepare them for college and career readiness. These additions to the math department are exactly what the teachers are looking for, the math supervisor, and the assistant superintendent. So we're very happy that they're going in place, going to go in place next year. We're changing our curriculum writing and our philosophy on curriculum development. We need to continue to emphasize what curriculum development really is. Performance-based assessments. We have a really nice group of teachers and administrators called the Assessment Committee. This was put together this year, and really analyzing every single form of assessment in the district, and the overassessment that is taking place, and what we can do to try to eliminate some of that and build that back into the curriculum, so there's common assessments that are happening all the time. And with that, we can remove some of those secondary assessments that are going on right now, and try to alleviate some of that for the teachers. The health program initiative, Mr. Albin has done a phenomenal job with physical education and health, and the Yes You Can Health Program. Instructional strategies to help teachers who are working with our ESL population, our ELL population. Very, very important that everybody understands the most effective strategies to help those students be successful. And then, we've done a lot of work with technology, and we cannot forget the importance of helping everybody to infuse the technology effectively. Very, very important. We spend a lot of money every year to make sure we have the devices, because we know the importance of the devices. We know the importance of the teachers having the devices. We need to make sure that we continue to provide that professional development, so we're doing that as effectively as we can. Speaking of technology, we'll be able to finish off the one-to-one initiative that we started a few years back, making sure that students have access to the technology. We are able to provide Chromebooks to all of our first and second grade students. They'll be in carts in each classroom, in grades two and one. That will finish off to make sure that all of our schools have access to the technology they need. And we will also be providing a different laptop where it's a touchscreen, and it's also a Chromebook at the same time, and that'll be for our kindergarten students. And the idea behind that is, we know that students begin at a very early age, and we want to promote that literacy, or that learning through the technology. Continuing with the Google Apps for Education for all staff and students. And the important part is the bandwidth. If you don't have your hardware where it needs to be, as far as handling all of the devices that we have within the district, we're going to have devices that aren't effective for us to use. One of the pieces I started off the presentation with was the importance of safety and security and student achievement being 1A and 1B, and you always have safety and security being first. We continue to upgrade the cameras in the buildings, because we know the importance of having the cameras, and not just in the high school, but across the district. The three, the four middle schools obviously have more, because they're bigger, there's more to cover, but the elementary schools are coming onboard as well, because of the need for that safety and security. Some of our capital projects, when we go through, we're done with this slide, I'm going to ask our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Ziggy, to come up, and he's going to show a little bit of the work that's been done in preparation for tonight. But we're talking about intercom upgrades in three schools, fire alarm upgrades. Some of these things are required. They're not something we're choosing over something else. They are required. The ROTC room renovations, what a phenomenal program at the high school. It continues to expand every year, and they have outgrown their rooms, so we need to do some renovations to make sure that they have a place that they can properly learn and train. Cafeteria replacement tables. We need to continue to make sure that our tables in our elementary schools, our middle schools are safe, and we have to build that into the budget. We continue to have that in the budget. Interior door replacements at Gregory, asphalt concrete repairs around the district, and asbestos removal. When we have to replace a floor, and the floor is 50, 60, 70 years old, we have to make sure that we properly handle the asbestos that once was approved many, many years ago. Okay, Mr. Ziggy, do you mind coming up? And we'll, Mr. Mendez, his presentation is minimized, so if we can just pull his up real quick. Do you just want to come right up to the microphone, Mr. Ziggy?
Okay. There we go. Like I've been doing every year for the last seven or eight years, we've had a before-and-after presentation to give a flavor of what we spent our money on, and seeing the condition that the project was in, and then the end result after it was repaired. And this is an example of our Mount Pleasant roof replacement, the before picture, and then the after picture. We went to foam roofs this year, which is a new concept, not for the industry, but for our district, and we tried them out, and we'll soon see if they work. Right now, they're not leaking, so that's a good thing. Mount Pleasant, another area of a roof that was needing to be replaced, and then the Again, Mount Pleasant was one of our worst schools in the district for roofs. It now has become one of the best schools in the district, because most of it has been replaced over the last several years. And that's the after. Those yellow pads you see around the rooftop units, or the mushroom vents there, those are our work-related pads, so that if any oils drop on the roof, it's protected there. Again, the roof replacement at the high school, and you can see the end result. Structural repairs at the administration building. You see that the fence that was on top over the years deteriorated the wall, and we did two things there, replaced the fence with a guardrail and did structural repairs on the wall. And there's the end result, structural repair. The entire wall along the entire length was recoded and reinforced, and then the guardrails were installed. Structural repairs, where we have rebar actively coming through, the concrete was falling out, and then you'll see the end result of the repairs. This is a new epoxy that's out there called RDEX. The life of it is supposed to be double that of concrete, so we've tried that, and so far, some good results. See how bad the stairs were there? And the next picture of the end result. Again, some structural repairs at Gregory School for our driveway for retaining walls. And then you can see the end result. Down at our bus garage, three years ago, we had two sections of our wall replaced. We continue to replace because of structural defects in the walls, and that's one section, and that's the end result repair. Another section, and the repair. And then the third section, and the repair. So three-quarters of that back wall have now been replaced. We have one more section to go, and we're hoping to get that done within next year. And that's the top of the wall before, and that's the top of the wall after, after the non-user obsolete equipment was removed, and now the structural integrity to that wall. And that was our presentation.
Mr. Ziggy, you and your staff do a phenomenal job. I want to thank you publicly. That's just a snapshot of the good work that goes on every single day in this district. And one of the things is, when you walk through, when strangers walk through the buildings, they're amazed that we have buildings over 100 years old, and they are so well-maintained and kept, and that's not by chance. That's because Mr. Ziggy and his staff take great pride in making sure things are clean and maintained. And, you know, this board and Mr. Calavano recognize that when you have old buildings, you have to put money back into those old buildings. It's no different than our homes. And if you don't, they deteriorate very quickly. So it's something that's important that clearly goes unnoticed to us, because we live in it every single day. There's some really nice work on it. I appreciate all that. So, Monday night, I was talking to the board about some options, and we had three options up there, and there was some discussion about different things, and my clear recommendation is that it would be option one with the bank cap, that I did not feel, as a superintendent, we could do any farther than that. I thought that it's a big enough struggle where we are right now with option one. And the board asked, asked me to go back and dig in on Tuesday morning to try and find some additional things, where they really focused on the supply lines, and that's exactly what we did. We dug in, we met bright and early, and were there very late, and we were able to discuss some things with some individuals, and let them know that some things are going to be cut out of either their department, their budget, whatever it might be. But there was also some comment made that, I'm not sure if it was directed to me or to one of the board members, and I don't remember who really said it, about a threat about health benefits. And I want to be really clear, really, really clear. Nobody on the board, or in central office, the principals, the assistant principals, supervisors, nobody wants anybody to be cut. But the reality is that we have a major budget deficit that we have to balance. We have to balance that by tomorrow morning for the preliminary budget to go into the county. So, the health benefits is a financial fact, that if we do not get an agreement with the OEA, the health benefits will go up another $1.3 million, which is not in this preliminary budget. And the other really scary part of this is, is that we have a timeline associated with this. Horizon is our carrier, and they've made it very clear that they need time to implement the new plan. And they've indicated 90 days from July 1st. That's April 1st. Now, I called them and said, is there some flexibility on that? Because we're trying to move this process along. And they said, very little. I said, fair enough. So, I don't want anybody in the room to think that I'm happy about any reduction in this year's budget, because I'm not. It's personal lives that you're talking about, people's careers, people's livelihood. But unfortunately, we have to make very difficult decisions, and we have to determine what has the biggest impact and what has the least impact. But the health benefits, you must understand, are not negotiable. Right now, in this budget, we have the 10-20 plan with the hope that we're going to get that contract settled, and we can move forward, because it saves everybody money. It saves the district $1.3 million, and it also saves everybody, including myself, contribution money that comes out of our paychecks. And that's a really important piece that we need to understand. But, you know, this idea about, there was a threatening message about the health benefits, folks, it's not threatening, it's factual. And I don't want anybody to walk out of here tonight, and on May 1st, when we have to come and do the final budget, that we have to have the terrible conversation that we still have a bigger deficit to deal with. So with that, let me go through the reductions that we have slated for our preliminary budget. We still have two supervisors. Now, remember, these are not just instructional, when you think supervisor, everybody thinks instructional. There are different supervisors in the district. Two assistant principals, 13 teachers. Now, again, it says teachers, it does not mean that they have to be in the classroom. 20 full-time and four part-time paraprofessionals. On Monday night, that was 23, and we were able to dig in and find some money to pull back some of those paraprofessionals. And I live in the real world to think that from now until September 1st, we're not going to need paraprofessionals for students either moving in, or students who are going to be classified that need a, need that additional assistance and help. The other idea behind this, though, is we are not in control of that. That's the one piece that we're not really in control of. Three administrative assistants, one clerical aide, one technology technician. What's not listed here, which was there Monday, is the library media specialist, and obviously, those paraprofessionals, and the lunch aids. And again, when we're analyzing who comes back, who we try to bring back, we go back to those basic two things, safety and security, and student achievement. Now, I am going to talk to you a minute about the number of teachers that are on here. One of our buildings in particular have some individuals where their class sizes are very small. And with those reductions, those class sizes are going to 17 to 18, no more than 20 kids. And I can tell you that that is a very, very fine number to have, no matter what level we're talking about. So when this comes down to difficult decisions, we do something what's called efficiencies, and we look at every single department, and we look at every single building, and we look at the number of kids that they're having in their class, and their class sizes and caseloads and things of that nature, and we determine. I'll give you an example. Roosevelt Middle School has 28 kids in a science class. In another building, they have half of that, and that's unacceptable. And that is called efficiencies, about determining and looking very closely at how that happened. And so now, we're able to balance out and get those sizes for Roosevelt down to a manageable class size, while also bringing up those other classes that are completely underclassed, and making them somewhat equal. So when we're talking about teachers, nobody wants to see a teacher ever out of a classroom for reasons of budget cut. But when we have to analyze, because of the budget deficit, there are the efficiencies that come into play. And please remember, there are other individuals involved. When it says 12 teachers, it doesn't mean they're sitting there, there are 12 classroom teachers. We have at the bottom of this slide, the five leased buses. We have been on a cycle for several years to continue to lease buses to replenish the fleet. We want our buses to be safe, we want our buses to be newish, and so when the kids are coming and going home from school to school and from school, they're on a very nice and respectable bus. Lastly, the overall impact. And again, this is a tax impact based on the average assessed value. Now, it's not market, can't confuse the two. This is assessed. 338,129 is the average assess. With the bank cap and the two-point increase, 2.0 increase, we're 271,43 per year, which works out to be $22.62. Okay, I'd like to invite the board to come back up to the seats for discussion. Okay. I'd like to invite the board to come back up to the seats for discussion. You heard Mr. Calavano indicate that we're going to have the board do discussion, and then we'll open it up for comments. There's only one public comment tonight. After the public comments are done, then the board will go ahead and vote on the preliminary budget, and then the meeting will be over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. Thank you, Mr. Ziggy, and Mr. Calavano. And thank you to all the administrators who worked so hard on both on the three options on Monday night and on this new condensed option. Now, I'm going to turn over comments to Mrs. Lab and Mr. Schwartzbaum, so that they can comment on some negotiations update.
Good evening. As Mr. Rutske had indicated, benefits are a large part of our contracts—I mean, they're also a large part of our budget. As you saw tonight in the slide, the benefits are nearly 16% of our budget, which is approximately $22.8 million. We received our information from the broker on March 8th, a Wednesday. The following day, we turned over that information to both union presidents. For the sake of transparency, and for the community to be aware, on Friday, at some point prior to the weekend, we will be publishing on our website those plans, so the community and the staff can see what has been offered through our broker. So, this way, everyone can tell and see the high-quality care that we offer to our employees. That's basically in a nutshell. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
So, I just wanted to go over the proposed medical plan that we were able to negotiate through the broker. We—first of all, as far as dental and vision, there's no increase at all, and I think that's the first piece. The bigger piece, obviously, is medical. The plan that we have proposed to all the staff is really very comparable to what's in place today. We're terming it the 10-20 plan. The current plan allows for a $10 copay, $20 copay, and $30 copay. What the broker, as well as the insurance company, wants to do is combine the two, and with the following. So, we're calling it a 10-20 plan, since over 85% of the staff is in those plans. The current plan would have, for a primary care physician, no copay. For a prescription, would be a $10 copay, and for a specialist, would be a $20 copay. So, these are very comparable plans to what's in place. They're reasonable, and it would allow the district to save approximately $1.3 million. We're very cognizant of the fact that we need the teacher—we need the unions to agree the teachers. But what we're saying is that this is part of—that's in our budget right now, that we built in the savings, and we're hoping that we can come to a conclusion with the contract and move forward.
Additionally, in addition—well, in addition to the 10-20, which is a blend of the current offerings, there'll be a high deductible plan as well for the employees to consider whether they'd like to purchase or be involved in that. So, there will be two offerings. And again, we're hoping that the negotiations come to a conclusion, so we can move forward with our budget and just lock in these rates before the rates are no longer available to us. Again, it'll be on the website on Wednesday for the community and all staff members to see. Friday, I'm sorry. What is it? Sorry. Friday. By Friday.
Thank you, Mrs. Lab. Thank you, Mr. Schwartzbaum. Okay. As far as these—the new—this new budget presentation, we asked the administration on Monday night to go back and try to find some more cuts, and they were able to go back and find some more cuts that didn't affect the classroom as much. And nobody—as Mr. Rutske said, nobody wants to cut staff members or educational programs. But, as you all know, in the current economic climate, we—it's really hard-pressed to raise taxes and maintain the quality of schools that we have. And that always affects the taxpayers. And we are limited, of course, by the 2% statutory cap. So, that's as far as we can raise taxes statutorily. Thank you, Mr. Calavano, for going back through the supply line and finding some technology savings, or some things that we can put off for another year. But I do—I do have one question. I know we've built into the budget that whenever we come to a resolution of a contract, that we've built into the budget retroactive amounts for the past few years. So, that's there. So, that will not be in the budget next year. So, hopefully, we can go back and purchase some of the technology that we are putting off now.
Mr. Morty?
Yeah.
Jerry, can you— So, the retro is built into the budget, yes, for last year and for this year. And I hope that we don't have to worry about next year. So, yes, it's built in for last year, and it's built in for this year. But, you know, our goal is not to go into next year.
Thank you for clarifying that. As Mr. Rutske said during the presentation, we have six trailers at three different schools for over 15 years now. We've been looking at the preschool option for quite some time. We've looked at St. Joseph's and quite a few other locations, suburban hills. And it would be great to be able to take this opportunity to remove the preschool program from Kelly School, to make room there, and at some point, to remove the six trailers. It's really—if you've ever been into any of the trailers, it's in pretty bad shape. Next year, we're implementing the next-generation science standards, and that's one of the supply lines. If you go through the budget, you'll see a lot of large numbers. It's not pens and pencils. The next-generation science standard is actually over—I think it's 425,000 for that—implementing that program. So, when you see supplies, it's not pens and pencils. It's actually curriculum, professional development, and purchasing of textbooks. You know, and that's what I have so far. Mr. Robertson?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm losing my voice here. First and foremost, teachers—the teachers and the administrators in our district do an amazing job of educating our children, educating my children. And it's deeply personal to me as we looked at having to make any staff reductions. It's—you know, we're not dealing with positions. We're dealing with lives. We're dealing with people. We're dealing with real-life situations. In some cases, people are already struggling. So, these are very—these are critical, difficult situations, decisions to make. And we have to do better. We have to do better. I guarantee you, though, that we went back—we scrutinized every line item, looking at supplies per classroom, per building, per child, and making every strategic cut that we could to avoid having to cut people. The people who are our product, the people who make our school system the great school system that it is. And we still have to do better. I'm pleased that we have begun an effort—you've heard me talk about fund development, what do you call it, private funding, fund development, going after grants, sponsorships, strategic partnerships, and really pursuing additional revenue. We know the federal government's not going to give us more money. We're lucky they didn't cut this year, but we know there'll be cuts next year. State funds have been flat, and everyone's fighting to slice up—all these districts are fighting to slice up that same pie. It's not going to get any bigger. So, we have to drive—we have to generate new revenue. And we're going to continue doing that, moving ahead. We have teachers, supervisors, and a grant writer partner. And we're going to push very hard on that, because that can fund teacher positions. It can fund programs. It can fund entire initiatives, so we don't have to look at cuts. Now, the other tough part of our job is that, you know, first of all, as a parent and taxpayer, I'm perfectly willing to pay more in taxes to keep the quality schools that we have, and knowing it also helps property values. It does so many different things. It's—but it's really quality school system for our kids. But part of the tough—one of the tough parts about our job is that we're not only representing our teachers, we're not only representing our children, we're not only representing the parents, we're representing the taxpayers. And that's a tough balance to strike in responsibilities. Matter of fact, it's interesting that in the last two years of budget meetings, the people who showed up the most were—who came up to the mic the most were actually disgruntled taxpayers, concerned taxpayers, and I'm not just saying Mr. Kramer. But no, there was—a—and I tease him because I like him a lot. I think he has great ideas. But, no, we had a lot of people come up to the mic, and it was about tax—paying taxes. This past year, our—you know, our town is going up in taxes because our commercial ratables, our businesses, have decreased. And that's something that we have to change. The school board itself can't change, but something that—excuse me—to think about. The county's going up in taxes. State's going up in taxes. And the combined impact on a West Orange taxpayer is huge. Last fall, when I had to go door-to-door during the campaign, knocking on doors, I can't count how many senior citizens I spoke with who said, "Love this town. Love our school system. My kids went here. My grandkids went here. Some of them still going here. But I can't afford to age in place. Can't afford to live here anymore." I had Democrats who said to me, "You know what? I'm a Democrat, lifelong Democrat. I'm going to vote for Trump. I'm going to do anything. I don't know if it was going to work or not. I don't, you know, really like either candidate, but maybe somebody can cut my taxes." As we—somebody had suggested, a number of folks suggested at the mic last meeting, that we consider going back to the voters with a referendum. And see, having the voters vote, because the voters know we have a great school system that impacts property values and all this. Well, our over—just over 4,000 households of parents certainly believe that. And a lot of other folks believe it, too. When we do—if we took a very close look at our registered voter base, looked at the number of seniors in town, looked at the number of folks whose kids are no longer in the schools, while they love our schools, we would be facing a situation where we would not be guaranteed a, "Oh, yes, we're going to raise taxes some more for the schools," because a lot of people feel squeezed already. And if we did not get that affirmative vote, guess what happens? Our budget would then go to the town council. The town is trapped for money. What are they going to do? What they did last time. And we wouldn't have anything but a recommendation to make. It would take the power away from us. So, I thought about that carefully, thought, "See, you know, do we just need to have more guts, more courage? Do something different?" And I'm a person who's known for doing something different, not being afraid to push the envelope. But I thought to myself, "That is a huge risk." And the numbers just don't bear out that the reward is there. So, then it puts us back in the situation of, "What do we do?" We have to stay within budget and use—even spending the 2%, using our bank cap, using all of our resources. What can we do? And that's where we are right now. So, it's a tough reality. So, yes, we have to do better. Next, as we look at—you've heard now, our health benefits mentioned several times. And I know some folks felt last time, "Well, you know, this sounds very threatening." We're in a real, serious reality, and we have an opportunity that's already built into our budget to save $1.3-plus million. But we also have a time limit to do it. It's a reality. It's not a threat. And once again, I have kids in the school system. This is about my kids, as well as your kids, my neighbor's kids. This is personal. This isn't a number on a page. This isn't politics. I hate politics, and I suck at politics, frankly, I'm a general politician. This isn't politics. This is real. So, I'm hoping that we could take advantage of this. It's already built into the budget. And if we can't, that's another $1.3 million that we lose, that we would have to cut. So, tough realities. Now, opportunities. What I am happy about, we looked at—some folks said, "Well, okay." And I had to look hard at this myself. The preschool, do we really need that now? Do we want to make that investment? Another harsh reality. And I've been preaching about this for months. We have—we're already—in—you've heard it from my colleagues, I've heard it from superintendent, our elementary schools are busting at the seams. We have trailers way past what was supposed to be a legal limit, and have to get waivers all the time for Washington, Gregory, and Redwood. It's ridiculous. Kelly, busting at the seams. Preschool is, you know, at capacity. Malpleasant, the other elementary schools, very near capacity. And the reality is, we had hundreds of families, things like 700 or so new residents move in last year, many of whom are—either have small kids, or kids that have just entered the school system, or a lot of young couples that want to have kids. Guess what's going to happen? Okay? Then we have hundreds of houses and hundreds of apartments that are planned for downtown, another 300 houses, 300 apartments, then another 100 houses in the valley. And that's not even all the housing projects planned. Guess what's going to happen? It's a pay-me-now or pay-me-later situation. We're already busting at the seams. We have a preschool that was built to be a preschool. So, if we don't take advantage of this now, what do we do? Because when we go to a—look at a property that isn't already built out, guess what? Then we have to spend $1 million to $3 million just to meet code standards to make the property work. Here's one that's already ready-made, and it allows us also to retain some positions, because we need staff. We need principal. We need teachers. We need all that's part of that. So, I felt the right decision was, along with my colleagues, we got to invest in the preschool. We have to. This is an opportunity. We've missed three or four of them in the past several years to do this. And we've had—we saw this need coming. It's been a need long development. So, we had to invest in that. Next, there are a lot of things that we have a chance to really improve our—the quality of education for our kids, to continue to, that also improves our school brand. The expansion, meeting the next-generation science standards, which is a—sounds like a fancy term, but bottom line is, it's more experiential learning and a better curriculum that's more—that's based more on real-world standards. I know that teachers know all this, but the other folks, I don't know if they do know that. But that's—we had to upgrade and invest in programs and curricula, and we had the great teachers to deliver it. Code. Code is the world's universal language. We've started code and engineering at Edison. We have the opportunity to expand that, to invest in that as part of our science and technology efforts. Technology itself, how do we deliver these programs? Technology itself, how do we deliver these programs? Third graders now have to take tests on a computer, including writing short answers and essays. Well, when do we start teaching them? Second grade, first grade. What do we need to do that? Chromebooks. So we had to make investments in technology. We cut out technology where we didn't have to make the investment that day. Cisco, okay, we have three classrooms. Wow, that's a high, it's a prestigious program. Kids are actually getting certification in Cisco technology and Cisco software. But let's suspend on the one classroom that absolutely has to have the computers upgraded. We're not going to invest in the other ones right now. So we had to look critically at each line item. How can we improve education? How can we improve career opportunities? How can we better support our teachers in terms of what they have to work with to deliver the great ideas that they have, the great curricula, the great lesson plans? And where can we cut strategically? Tough decisions. So with that, I will wrap up with, it personally hurts me to have to cut anybody. I'm sounding a little, my voice is cracking right now, kind of a little, it's, it sounds like I'm about an octave lower because I haven't slept much. Because this really is painful. But we had to make tough decisions, and we do have to do it within a budget. And, you know, I look forward to hearing from you, but I hope you'll support us in this and understand us even where you don't, you may not support the decisions made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Charles?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a few questions before I gave my quick statement. My first question is for Mr. Calavano. Do you recommend using any more of this surplus?
No, not at all. Not for the size of a district, for the size of this budget, to be left at 900,000, it's scary.
Scary, good. Okay. On the shared services that we talked about in the purchasing groups, is there a fee to be part of that?
No.
Okay. And a part of the debt service you recorded was 1.2 million that was recorded incorrectly. Can you just tell me what year again that happened?
2007.
And is there any interest that we're paying on that besides the debt service amount?
No, actually, they didn't charge us interest.
Okay. Statement was gracious there then, I guess. The five, I guess maybe this is for Mr. Ruski, the five leased buses, what impact is that going to have on the transportation? Is that more routes? Is that a longer time for kids to be on the bus? Is that earlier pickup times, later pickup times?
No, no impact at all. It just means that we are not taking order vehicles out of the fleet for this year.
Okay. One last question. If we're looking at the last slide, 21, looking at a $271 increase for the average homeowner, if you combine, I'm guessing the county's going to be somewhere around 2% and the municipal, let's say that's even 2%. We're looking at the average assessed home, about $800 increase, just if you combine with ours. So I guess my statement is, is that there's a long time before the final budget is actually required to be submitted. I think the board and administration have done a good job up to this point. However, I think there's a lot of work that remains to be done. And I remain committed to developing a final budget that is fair to the taxpayer and to the children in this town. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
So the key, the key to any budget, and just from a overall perspective, is not to cut jobs, personnel. People's lives and families are at stake, that this isn't about a bunch of numbers taking percentages, that we have to be compassionate and understand that every decrease is someone's fam, is an individual in someone's family. I believe that we need to approach this budget in a little different way than what we've done. We need to go from a perspective of what's called zero-based budgeting for non-personnel items, that while things are difficult, we need to go back and say that we're, we'd rather cut back on items as opposed to people. We need to be very cognizant of the taxpayers and residents of this town. We need to keep West Orange affordable, and we need to make sure that the tax increases are reasonable. The assessed values in this past year declined by 19.5 million dollars. That means that while we all are sitting here saying we love this community, I personally have been living here over 31 years, we need to understand that assessed values are going down, and if nothing else, because of the decrease in assessed values, taxes went up by 1.3%. So this is a double-edged sword. It's not, "Oh, let's just increase," and there were, there are no ramifications. There are ramifications. With the proposed budget, just from the school budget, it will increase taxes by 4.1%. Now, averages are somewhat deceiving because it will go up by several hundred dollars, but the impact will be just from the school budget. The average homeowner will pay $8,500 a year in taxes. And then if you layer over the known increases by the town as well as the county, taxes for the average homeowner will be $9,000 a year, or $750 a month. That's before paying for electricity, utilities, maintenance, anything else. So we have to be very cognizant, and this isn't just about saying, "Well, we want the best for our children." We all do. Education is paramount. But not everyone in this town is, sends their children to school. We have many, many senior citizens who are, who are on fixed income, and they themselves are getting priced out. So we need to be cognizant of that. I'd like to go over some of the budget items. While we discussed the 1.3 million dollars in health benefits, there is another area within health benefits that has to be addressed, and that's waivers. The district has approximately $1 million that we are paying staff members for not taking health benefits. The waivers are up to $4,000 per staff member, and there are approximately 300 people. This is in essence, that we are, we're, we're, we're basically saying to people, "Don't take health benefits, and we'll give you $4,000." That's not acceptable. That's a million dollars that we have available to utilize for our budget. The other area, one thing that I've said many, many times was about the Energy Savings Program, the ESIP. We spent $11 million on these items. And I'll state it publicly, this, I, this was put in a month before I got voted on, voted in when I came on the board. I met with the people from ESIP, I met with bond council. The projections that were told to us, that was in the first year, we would see a savings of $360,000. They're not available, they're not here. It was fictitious. We literally spent $11 million on items for, such as shutting off our vending machines at night so they, so we don't have electricity. The payback was over 100 years, but yet, we did it. Why? Well, it's good because we're planning. So now, here we are, we're faced with a dilemma of, we need more schools, which we do, they're overcrowding, but we don't have the money because we literally spent it on frivolous items. So now, we're going to go back again to the taxpayers and say, "Oh, you know, we need schools, we do, we have trailers, but you need to, we need as a board to go and spend wisely and make decisions that are wise, good financial decisions." The other item, so the other item I want to address is, is within the buildings, while there are things that one can call maintenance, and we need to have things done, but we can defer them. They're more than likely, nothing will happen. And we may be kicking you down the road, but we all do that. And as someone who builds and manages property, we always defer. One year doesn't, will not make a difference. And if it means that we can not cut less people and increase taxes less, I think we have to do that. So just to summarize, in my opinion, this budget is not acceptable. We need a lot more work, and we have to come up with other options.
Before I get into the budget at hand this evening, I just want to respond a little bit to Mr. Schwartzbaum's statements regarding the ESIP program. As the only board member who actually voted against it, I do not believe that it was solely for vending machines to go on and off when somebody comes into a room. Mr. Siggy, would you mind coming up to the podium and just discussing a little bit about the ESIP program?
The ESIP program was developed years ago by the Bureau of Public Utilities and was putting money back into schools through energy conservation. When we are paying our electric bill, and we're paying, and I'll use arbitrarily $2 million, and we can reduce that by $500,000 in cost savings, that money was put back at the capital in the projects that reduce the energy costs. So it's not costing us any more money, it's not money that we took out of the taxpayers' pocket, we're using the energy savings. Now, we had a choice of either saying, "We're going to pay $2 million and just pay our electric bill," and then that continued to go up each year, which it will go up. But we're cutting kilowatt hours, and that's what the program was all about. So whatever the rate is against that, whether it go up or down, we have less kilowatt hours, and that's what the program was all about. So we have many, many things, lighting, variable speed motors, yes, vending machines, all of our computers, all of our energy savings, where we can put watt savers on those, we did. And we could go on and on. Hot water tanks, many, many things that were part of the ESIP program, which is now saving us a lot of money. I just want to respond.
Mr. Siggy, I want him to add something. Mr. Siggy, some of the photos you showed us tonight with the foam roof, wasn't that also through the ESIP program?
Yes, that was in lieu of, actually, the program was more close to 13.5 million. We only did $11 million. We cut out the controls for our boilers. Some of the boilers that we wanted to do, we couldn't do for the controls. That was a big part of it, but we made that decision, and in lieu of the controls, we got roofs replaced, and that's where we decided to go with foam roof.
I have a question for you as well. It's in your department, but not directly related to the ESIP. When we were doing the budget cuts, wasn't it true that within the past 48 hours, about 20 or so line items of maintenance and repairs were cut from your budget?
Yes.
Because I remember looking at all of them, it was an extensive list, took up three-quarters of a page. Okay.
And we are deferring, we continue to defer.
We defer.
And on some of those items, this is our third and fourth year that we're deferring the same item. So we're getting older and older as we're going. So we agree, yes, we do have to defer, but it becomes a point of no return.
And as a Mount Pleasant parent, I got to tell you, that roof was so bad, there were leaks all over the damn place. It was to the point where we couldn't use the all-purpose room, which is also the cafeteria, hence all-purpose. It was everything. We couldn't even use the place. And there were other leaks as well. We waited until it got to, it was just not functioning at all. Okay.
I recall one of the recent board meetings that we had at Mount Pleasant, there was literally a pail catching water in four locations. And Mrs. Brill was on the board at that time, and I remember we had, literally had pails all over the roof.
What was the cost of the roof at Mount Pleasant?
Of course, I'd have to go back a little.
I'd venture to say that it was a fraction. No one is talking about not repairing items that need to be repaired. That is an extreme. That's, I totally concur. You have a roof that's leaking and needed to be repaired. The issue is, and I believe when we went through it, there was about $2 million. And the other item that I will address is the fact that the projections were based upon oil at $110 a barrel, and at the time when we, when actually voting, oil was already at, was at 38, and today sits at 44. But we, but no one wanted to accept the fact that that's where the markets were, but no, the assessment was they would go up, where everyone, all the experts said no. In addition, we, on the reverse auction, as you talk about kilowatts, we did a reverse auction this year with, prior to the ESIP, and we saved $150,000 just because of rate decline. So when you actually take in the projections, and these were projections, the only way we get a financial return, because this is not about education, $11 million is an investment, and you get a return on your investment, that we were supposed to get $370,000. It's water under the bridge, but it's a point. The point being, the point being, we need to make good business decisions when it comes to noneducational items. That's my point.
Absolutely. Absolutely, Mr. Schwartzbaum, we agree.
And your analysis of the market was correct.
Thank you, Mr. Siggy, for coming up.
He was also right about saving kilowatt hours.
Thank you, Mr. Siggy.
Thank you, Mrs. Z. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Mrs. Lab. Okay, getting back to the budget this evening. Mr. Ruski, I do have a question for you on, let me find my little page here, on the cuts as it relates to the assistant superintendent, assistant principal and supervisors. Will that, or how will that affect the evaluation process? Because under Marzano, as we know, there are numerous evaluations required.
It will certainly impact. Anytime you take an administrator that does evaluations, you know, 50 or 60 a year, those are going to have to be spread across multiple people.
Okay. Going back to the funding issue, I think a couple of my colleagues touched on it, but our state aid, as Mr. Calavano indicated, has now been frozen for a number of years at 8.5 million. The problem with the state aid, as we hear from all the politicians running for any office in Trenton at this point, is the state aid is based on a decision in the Abbott versus Burke case that was decided 30 years ago. And at that time, our demographics were, economic demographics were different than they are now. At that time, we were listed as something called a GH district. It goes from A to J, I believe is the last one, J or I or whatever it is. We now have 40% of our students on free and reduced lunch. We are comparable to what would be a CD district. CD districts are locally funded by about 65% from the taxpayer. However, we, with this false label of a GH classification, thank you, we are funded at 90%. Now, I know after 9/11, when Jersey City became the new downtown of Manhattan, their commercial base went through the roof. I mean, Hoboken is not as we knew it 30 years ago, however, their funding is frozen in time from 30 years ago. So when the politicians speak about different funding formulas, whether it was the governor's fair funding formula, Mr. Sweeney's or Mr. Pollock's or whoever's talking about it, the bottom line is, what we're here tonight is, we're dealing with those decisions made 30 years ago, because in my heart, I do not believe that West Orange should only be getting the 8.5 million based on what our economic demographics were 30 years ago. And it is so unfair, the funding formula, which is not even funded, but that's what puts us here this evening, looking at cuts that none of us want to make. We want to expand our district, we want to provide for our staff, we want to provide for our students, we want to fix our house. for our students. We want to fix our house, but we can't because we are limited to something that happened 30 years ago. But that is our reality this evening, and we have to, as Mr., um, somebody here said, you know, the town goes up 2%, the county goes up 2%, um, it's a lot of money, particularly when you're on a fixed income. And when you look, the average home, which is assessed at 338, that's going up $271. Last year, when we went to cap at 2%, the impact to the taxpayer was $124. This year, without even using bank cap, it's up at $203. So where did that $75 go? As Mr. Robertson indicated, we lost a lot of commercial ratables this year in West Orange. When you look at, for instance, the empty office building on Prospect and Woodland Avenue, when you look at what was once a thriving office complex by Executive Drive by Shopright, those places are empty right now. And we're losing that left and right. Luckily, we were able to secure something on, um, that medical building where the dining used to be on Pleasant Valley and Northfield. But even the assessments on the homes went up this year. So if your home was assessed at 300, you're now assessed at 350, so therefore, you're paying higher taxes. So I, I guess to round this all out is, the inequity of the funding and the dispersments of the state aid are so unfair. It pits us against each other. And I, somebody here had mentioned, you know, President Trump determined that he's proposing a 14% decrease in federal funding for education. Now, that's going to affect a lot of programs. That's going to affect a lot of grants. They're also affecting higher education, the college level of the kids at the colleges. It, it is a much, a bunch of variables that are creating a perfect storm, um, where we have to do this cut and, at the same time, increase to the taxpayers close to $300 with all of these cuts. So I, I guess I'm done lamenting and going off on that. My own, it's always my tangent on that one. But with that, I think I'm done, Madam President.
Thank you. I believe we're ready to hear from the residents if my colleagues don't have any further comments. Okay, great. Okay. If anyone has any questions or comments, we have a microphone in that side. If you want to use this microphone as well, please feel free to come up. Please state your name for the record and your address. There, there's a three-minute time limit to allow everyone a chance to speak. Mr. Alfred.
Hi, Ken Alfred, 45, Collmore Terrace. Um, I think I just have some questions, just from things I jotted down as we were going. Um, there were things on the slide of new programs being added that included culinary arts and some other things, and they sound great, and I've got a freshman at the high school, and would of course always love to see more and better things. They all seem really nice to have, but I'm questioning, if this is the year for that, if maybe some of those programs could be put off? I'm sure some of them are mandates for other reasons and can't be put off, like the dance program that had to be added because of Common Core, another good thing to have, but again, it's just this year. Same with Chromebooks for first and second grade, if that could maybe wait a year. Um, just a couple other notes, bear with me. Um, just because it confused me when I heard it, an example, if we could get one of a teacher, not by name, but just conceptually, a teacher who isn't a classroom teacher. Um, I don't know what that means in our district. Something else that might not be possible, and maybe it's for when the insurance plan goes up on the website, um, knowing, certainly for the teachers, if not for us, knowing what the monthly cost would be on the 1020 plan and the high deductible plan might be good to have and help people decide. And the last thing I jotted down was, I think I was at one or maybe both of the meetings where the ISIP thing was worked out, not to continue belaboring that, but I thought someone from maybe Honeywell said that there was a guarantee that nothing could end up costing us more, that it would definitely go down, so it was unclear from the discussion if we did spend more than we saved, or if we're saving or in the process of saving more than we're going to spend, but if not, um, maybe Honeywell or someone might owe us money. Um, and I guess my last question is just process-wise, because I know the deadline for the county's tomorrow, but then there's the real deadline in, in May for the final budget. If someone behind me in line is a financial genius and has a whole printout of the budget and says, I've got the plan, here's how it is, I can fix it, here's everything, can we do anything about that now, or is it too late for now, but that gets pushed to May? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred. And before Ms. Di Pasquale comes up, Mr. Rutske, could you just, um, explain the definition of, um, the teacher classification? Because it's, it's just anybody who's on the teacher's guide, right?
It's, it's anyone who's a part of the WEA, and we always protect it on this round, because to answer Mr. Albert's final question is, lots of things could change prior to the May 1st final approval. And so we always work very hard to go back from preliminary to the final and try to save as much as we can. Um, I said Monday night, one of the real challenges this year is, um, in past years, we didn't get the final health benefit number, so we were getting a projection for the preliminary, and, um, sometimes that's two or three percentage points higher than what it actually came in, which is two or three, four, $500,000, that we can come back to that final meeting and be able to save whatever the board felt were the appropriate things to save and what I was recommending to them. This year is different because we have the final number for health benefits, because we're trying to, um, get the contract settled, and that was one of the biggest issues with that. Uh, but we're, we're just protecting those individuals, and again, we're not saying, you know, what level assistant principal, what, because there's a lot of work that still gets done from now until May 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske.
Hi. Um, my name is Jean Torito. I've been a teacher in West Orange for 22 years. I just wanted to clear up something that I had brought up on Monday night about the, um, tax freeze that's available to senior citizens. And I believe Mrs. Mordecai had said that the program was no longer available, that they had stopped it.
No, it's adjusted somehow. I forget how it is.
Okay, well, I, I did my research. I found out. So I called the Livingston Tax Assessor's Office. I called the West Orange Tax Collector's Office, and I went on the, uh, New Jersey State Division of Taxation website. The program is still available to anyone that's 65 years or over. There are eligible, eligibility requirements. You had to have lived in New Jersey since 2003. You have to have owned your home for three years. You had to have actually paid your taxes, and the income level is $87,000 of earned income. The adjustment that was made was last year, for 2015, you had to have made less than $70,000. So I don't know, but I would imagine that a lot of people that are 65 or over, living on a fixed income, are probably not making $70,000, so would qualify for this program, and it's a very simple application. Um, so my point is, if you guys put that out there to the public, the senior citizens may love you, and then if you told them that it was a teacher that brought it to your attention, they might say, wow, West Orange teachers are really wonderful. Thank you.
I just want to let you know that program is also open to the disabled as well.
Sorry. It's okay.
Wait, wait one second.
We want, take your time. Take your time. Mr. Torito, thank you. Um, we actually looked at it as well since Monday, and we have those facts as well. We just need to figure out how we can work with the town to get that comment. Where's Mr. Torito? Where'd you go? Yeah, uh, thank you for that, and, and we, we looked, Mr. Calavano and I looked at it as well, um, and, and we plan to move forward, you know, meet with those individuals at the town level and figure out how we can help.
Thank you, Mr. Torito.
Hi, good evening. My name is Katie Witzig. I reside at 49 Main Road, just down from Mount Pleasant. Um, I have a series of questions, which I now understand I ask them all and then you answer them. So, um, let me start with the beginning, that, um, Ms. Mordecai, you said, what tech are we putting off? I'm curious as to what tech we are putting off that was originally in the budget. Um, you also talk about, um, as you're talking about positions that are being added, you're talking about two STEM positions, and then in the next breath, you were, somebody was talking about a grant writer who's employed by the district. I'm curious as to what percentage of grants the district receives, and if, how many of them are STEM, um, because that's one of the biggest areas that people are being funded in. I work in another city that receives a lot of STEM funding, so I'm wondering why West Orange can't be one of those people that could fund those positions, which would then save other teacher positions? Um, let's see. Hold on. Oh, also in regards to the power professionals, I'm just wondering how legally there can be that many power professionals on our cut list? Because if I understand, I mean, I don't have, I, I don't utilize a power professional, but I thought it was like illegal if you cut power professionals. I thought legally they were required. So I'm wondering how you can have, what is it, 25 power professionals on the list? Um, my other question is regarding people that are being cut versus people that are being hired. I know you guys did some back and forth, so you were able to reduce the numbers that were being cut, but there are, still are some positions of teachers being hired and some teachers being let go. So is there any more coverage? So you want to hire a principal for the preschool program, but you're getting rid of two supervisors and assistant principal. So is there any back and forth on that? Um, I also, just from my own knowledge, because I don't know, of the school board, does everybody have kids currently in the schools or that went through the school system? Just curious about that. Um, and my clock's not on, so I don't know how much more time I have. I'm a little sad about that. Is my three minutes just starting? Because I can keep going! So wait, I got more, seeing as my three minutes just started. I also have the same question who my friend asked about the culinary arts. I love culinary arts, but when you're cutting teachers, I was questioning the culinary arts. I was also questioning the dance, too, which I think may have been required by Common Core, but I don't know if that's true, but that was another question that I had. Um, let's see. Oh, I do have a question about, um, and I don't know the answer. So do we get to see the whole budget, like line by line? So why run a nonprofit? I mean, I don't have the $133 million budget. I have a million dollar budget, and we start our planning process for a million dollars, like, you know, seven, eight months in advance, and we go line by line and decide, can I afford toilet paper? Can I afford this? So do we actually get to see that? Um, let's see, and then I'll be done. I just want to make sure I got everything. Um, that's about all I have. I'm very curious as to my answers, but thank you so much. Look, I have two minutes and 13 seconds left. Can I say how awesome my Mount Pleasant teachers are? Can I say that to the town? Okay, thank you.
Hello again. Cindy Matu Brown, 24, Coral.
Circle. Um, I just had a couple of questions because of some of the things I heard tonight and on Monday. With respect to the reduction in staff members, particularly, uh, our teachers and our instructional assistants or aides, are these positions, um, going to be privatized? It's a question I have, because with so many cuts, I'm wondering who's going to take up the slack? I understand that the superintendent explained that some of the classrooms are not full, but I know that aides are valuable in classrooms where teachers, where teachers need assistance with the students who need, probably that have IEPs and things of that nature. So where is the balance in that going to be, and is that something that you're planning to privatize? And then my next question is, you're privatized, are you privatizing union positions? And also, I'm also concerned about, all of the cuts that I'm hearing, um, are all at the school level. All schools are being affected because you're taking away staffing. I have not, however, heard any discussion about any administrative positions being cut at the Board of Ed. And as with government, and we all know this, right, we're always top-heavy. We're always administration-heavy. So I'm wondering, have you discussed any cuts at the Board of Ed? If not, why not? And I'm also wondering, correct me if I'm wrong, I may be wrong, but from what I understand, the salary cap on superintendents was lifted. Is, it's not? Okay. If and when, let's say, I don't know with the new governor coming in, if and when it's lifted, is there a consideration on a salary cap to continue for our current superintendent or the incoming, if there is one, considering all the budget cuts we've had now that are affecting our children directly? That's all I have.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road. Looking at this budget, um, when you take the reduction in the tax levy, bringing the base, assess base up for everybody, the bank cap, the cap, you're realistically looking at about, correct me if I'm wrong, 3.5% on the school tax up in real terms. That exceeds CPI. That's pretty high. And the tax levy for West Orange schools is pretty high already to begin with. So you are getting an increase. It's unfortunate circumstances, and yes, education is important, and yes, education is valuable, so we probably are going to have to live with coming up to cap plus bank cap plus the reality of the demographics. That's likely, have to accept it because, well, education is important. However, I don't think we can realistically go beyond that. I don't think there's political will to break, to have a vote and break cap. I think that would lose. So I am going to make a suggestion as how we can both fairly live within this. I hate to see layoffs of teachers. You know, it's terrible. I mean, we're, we're human. We don't want to see people lose their jobs and livelihoods. But I think some back and forth with the union, kind of way to do this would be fair, still live within the cap and the bank cap, and that would be, look at healthcare. And from my perspective, how to save jobs for our youngest teachers, who would be the ones that most likely be laid off, would be basically have an 80-20 split on healthcare, where the taxpayers come up with a lion's share of healthcare costs 80%, and we ask our employees in all three unions, the bus drivers, the custodians, the teachers, to come up with 20% in exchange for zero layoffs. I think that the numbers would work, and I think that would be the fairest way, and go up to the maximum cap plus bank cap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred.
Good evening. I'm Robin Isarles from 22 Yell Terrace. My first question, um, can you please explain the preschool mandate, were we mandated in the past, and must it be in district preschool? Secondly, if the public doesn't vote on the contract, I'm curious why you are publishing the options. Shouldn't that be negotiated? And number three, how are you able to build in the $1.3 million savings in the health benefits if you haven't yet settled the contract? Thank you.
Luis Delgado, NJEA Uniserv Field Representative. I represent, uh, the West Orange Education The gentleman who spoke, uh, before Robin is a good example of why I'm here at the microphone, and it's unusual, because I, I'm very respectful of the relationship that has historically existed between the board and the leadership of this association. I was informed that you revealed details of proposals at the negotiating table to the public, and I am baffled about why you would go there, because it invites comments like this from the public, members of the public that are not at the negotiating table. What are you doing? Why? You've just created a whole area to be managed in the midst of this crisis, and you represented it well the other night at the board meeting. There was genuine discussion, but there was no agreement. We're not anywhere near it. We have good faith discussions going on, and that is in real jeopardy now, and I am perplexed. I welcome a response with this, since you've opened up the door to negotiate in public. What are you trying to do? What did you hope to accomplish by revealing the aspects of the proposals to the public?
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. We respond at the end.
I always have to follow somebody loud. That's not for me, right? That's not for me, right?
Hi, I'm Megan Brill, 101 Crest Road. I am a former board member and still have a kid at the high school. I have lots of questions, and I hate that I don't get the details that I used to get about our budgets, but I think that the presentation was a little bit different than Monday night, so having it twice was helpful. I'd like to know how many classrooms are going to be freed up if we move the preschool out of Kelly, and how many total children does that equate? I know when we put the additions on our schools, we hope to make up about 260 kids' worth of classrooms, and that didn't really work out that way. We use those classes for a lot of special ed rooms and therapy rooms and different things, so we didn't get that, you know, 260 down. It's like to know exactly how many kids we are guestimating. I think using all of our banked cap is a very scary notion, and I think that next year's budget is going to be even harder than this year's budget without having the ability to use any banked cap, and that the real option might be going out to vote, which is a scary thing that I think we all realize. I, for one, am looking forward to seeing what the health plan, the 10-20 health plan is that Irv mentioned on Monday night and that Laura mentioned tonight. I know that the family plan used to cost the district $35,000 a family. So one teacher's benefits was $35,000. I can tell you that my plan last year was $16,000 a year, really crappy benefits, $50 copays, $1,500 per person deductibles. This year, that same plan jumped to 20. So I really think that we have to look at either if the staff is not going to agree to get a cheaper plan, then they have to pay more for the plan that they want. And I think that I would really like to see what that 10-20 plan actually looks like, and if we're still paying $35,000 for a family plan. As far as the waivers go that Irv mentioned, that's definitely a tool in collective bargaining. In the past, we've always been able to use that $5,000 waiver, as instead of giving you $14,000 or $15,000 in benefits, we're going to give you $5,000, and you get your benefits from your staff. So now we're back to that, if it totals a million dollars, that's a big dollar amount and should be dealt with in collective bargaining, I believe. I think that emergency repairs cost us a lot more. Spending money calculated on the list that Bob Seegy put together is a good value for us. And I guess that's it. Thank you for your time, and I do appreciate all the work that all of you have done for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill.
Hi, I'm Josephine Kravitz. I live at 276 Gregory Ave. I'm a senior at West Orange High School, and I have more of a, I guess, more of a comment than a question, I guess, but I've been an extremely dedicated art student for all four years of high school, as well as probably almost all my years of school beforehand, mainly in the 3D design department, and I just wanted to say that from the perspective of a student, it's terrifying to see how our art system is slowly disappearing in front of my eyes, and that's something that's happening as we speak. I'm in 3D Design 5, which is the highest option, and that's not even offered next year because we don't have the supplies. It breaks my heart to see that my teachers actually buy most of their supplies out of pocket because we don't have the funding. So I actually am representing most of the art department tonight, who couldn't be here, so I have some quotes from them, if that's okay. One student says, "The art department, especially the 3D design program, has helped me realize an artistic ability and passion I never knew I had. The art department has facilitated a unique community feeling of support that has been critical in my development through high school. Because of my experiences in the various art programs, I'll be pursuing a sculpture minor in college, a feat I never would have considered before entering the program." Another student says, "The West Orange Arts Program has guided me every step of the way, from an eager 11-year-old with a dream to a student who has just accepted into the nation's top art schools. I'm so grateful for everything within the West Orange Arts Program that has offered me, because they gave me the courage and the confidence to pursue my dream. Without it, I can honestly say I wouldn't have followed my dream, which is pursuing my art career." And one last student says, "When I was a freshman," this is about music as well, "when I was a freshman, I had a hard time expressing myself to others and was only able to do so through music. I've been singing for over the course of six years now and find so much peace in doing so." She goes on to say that through the outlet of art and music, she's able to express herself in a way she wasn't able to before. And I guess the point that I'm trying to make is, as someone who's so dedicated to the arts, someone who's personally worked to raise my own money for my art teachers, I want to know if there's anything I can do, anything that we can do, because teachers should not have to be paying for supplies out of their own pocket, and I should not have to be concerned for my teachers' state of mind, my teachers' position in their job, and my ability to perform as a student. There have been times when I've offered to bring in things, because there's projects that I can't do, because I don't have those items and those abilities, and I think that that is something that's not only deprecating to the teachers, but it's deprecating to the students and to the system, because so many teachers and so many students are not going to have the opportunity that I did as a student to explore those artistic possibilities and explore students like me and others who are going to college for art. I'm going to college for art history, and I think that I never would have found that without the art program. So I just wanted to express the importance of that.
I'm also a senior at West Orange High School. And I just wanted to say that I am here tonight as a testament to the amazing and inspiring work that all of these teachers have done. Without their guidance, I wouldn't have the courage and moral sense to come up here and fight for what I feel is right, and that is that... I had this whole thing written out about option three, but now that I understand that I'm actually not part of the voting on that, I'm going to skip it and just say that, again, because of these teachers and all the work that they've done for me and for everybody else in the town, I'm going to be pursuing a career in education after this, but... I am very concerned about the precedent that this sets for me as someone interested in going into education, what the prospects going on tonight entail for someone. Is this the climate that I should expect, or I'm just, I'm concerned? And I also have a sister who's in 4th grade at Gregory Elementary School. She loves every second of it, and I'm also kind of concerned about what this means for her, because with staff cuts and possible program cuts, she won't be able to have the same experience that I had. I'm concerned that she won't be as inspired to follow her passions and to find what she loves to do because of all of the amazing options that the programs and the teachers of the West Orange School District offer.
Lisa Touzot, 15 Quarter Road, lifelong resident, parent of a senior at West Orange High School, and library media specialist here at Liberty Middle School. A question that I had is, when Mr. Calabana was giving his presentation, he said there was bank cap money that was lost. Why was that? In addition to the pre-K program, I know when I go to the mall and I see Gucci and Gap, I know I can't afford Gucci. I buy Gap because if I buy Gucci, I can't pay my bills. Thank you.
Hi, Maddie Werner, speech-language pathologist. I've been with the district 20-plus years, giving my heart and my soul to the most amazing students that I could ever ask to work with, and I plan to continue working with them. I just have a, there's been a lot stated here, a lot of rhetoric, a lot of numbers. I just want to know something simple. When you talk about benefits, are you stating we're going to pay more for our benefits, which, again, makes all of us bring home less money each paycheck? Because that doesn't make any sense to me. So if someone's going to answer that, I want to hear it.
Hi, Lynn Jacobs, 27 Funders Road. I saw 2 minutes 22 seconds, so I hope I could take some of that, but neither. First of all, some comments. You know, essentially, I didn't know much about ASEP. I just heard about it, and to me, I'm kind of shocked that we don't have some kind of system in place that avoids spending money where we can't get money back more than what we put in, and we don't keep our schools safe financially because of decisions like that. I think that was really, really a poor choice of implementing that decision. With regard to other issues, small, I know it's been talked about, it wasn't here when they had this discussion, it was about Gregory and overusing fuel. It was too hot in the school. That probably will be addressed and corrected, but I am sure that there are at least 100 other issues like that out there that everyone here is not aware of, that can cut costs to all the schools and maybe save one or two teachers' positions. I think we should be doing something like that. I also think that we should have some way of having a non-biased third party that says, "Okay, that's a good decision. Let's do that. That's a bad decision. Let's not do that. The reason we're here is because there was a mistake made in a budget. Now we're paying for it. That mistake should not have been made. It should have been caught before it went and got us into the trouble that we're in right now." Another thing, the gentleman that was talking about exposing about school tax information for people like us, I think he's 100% wrong. I think we pay taxes, we're entitled to know what's going on in the school system. Everybody has that right, and to hide that behind doors is 100% wrong. Finally, last thing. I think our kids are the most important thing. That's why we're here. It's about the kids, it's about the teachers, it's about the school, and we have to remember we have a responsibility, all of us have that responsibility, and I think we have to keep to it. And one thing that bothers me is how do we make such a big mistake in a financial calculation that partially brings us here? I'd like somebody to answer that for me, because I don't understand how that could happen, but it's really, it's horrible that it's bringing us to the table to have to go over what we're doing right now. There's really no reason for it. I'm sure you have more than one person checking, calculating. You have third-party financial companies that are doing this, but yet, here we are. So how does it get like this? How do we stop it in the future, and how do we make the right decisions? That's really what I would like to get answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Hi, Carol Anne Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. Cheerleader Carol's back. I want to thank all of you for your hard work. I am glad I am not you. Thank you to all the teachers who are here tonight and then have to get up early tomorrow morning and deal with my child, my children. I'm glad it's not me. I just have a couple of small questions, tagging on what Megan asked about the preschool. I don't know if it's a good idea or not. It sounds like a great opportunity, but it's lauded as something's going to help us remove trailers. There aren't any trailers at Kelly, so I'm confused about how that's going to get my kid out of a trailer next year at Gregory, or the kids at Washington, or the kids at Redwood. Because it seems like for that to happen, we'd have to redistrict, and I don't see that happening in the next however many months. The other question, the other comment I have is, Irv, you mentioned the waivers, and it does sound like a great way to save money, except frankly, if I was at a job where I got $4,000 for not taking the health insurance, but now you're going to take that money away from me, I'd probably say, "Hey, I want my benefit that I'm entitled to." So if we take away the waivers, how much more money is that going to cost us in the health insurance for that teacher? Especially, yeah, that's it. And then the other thing is, I'm a little confused, how many of those paraprofessionals that are being cut are actually currently mandated? Because if an IEP says that this child or these three children must have a paraprofessional, and we cut them, then we're breaking the law, and we also, one of the things that was mentioned is that there's often unbudgeted out-of-district payments that we're not expecting, and suddenly, for whatever reason, we have a kid who's now determined to need an out-of-district placement. Isn't that same kind of thing going to happen with the paraprofessionals? We cut all these paraprofessionals, and then we have kids with IEPs during the year who it's realized, God, this kid really needs. We can keep this kid in district if we give him one-on-one, but we have him budgeted for that one-on-one. So I guess I'm a little confused about how we can cut so many paraprofessionals, or maybe some of them are not IEP-mandated. I don't, I just want to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Mark Maniscalco, good evening. Just a few things. First, we heard people tonight say that no one wants to see job losses, but again, no one is doing what they need to do, which is to budget what you need to stop job losses and go to the voters. Second, you said you don't want to have job losses, so you could defer the new preschool. That's a lot of money that would save a lot of jobs. Third, when you talk about putting the healthcare items out there and you say it's not threatening, that's wrong. It's threatening. You're negotiating in public, you're trying to turn the public and the members against each other, and we have a good-faith discussion, that's what we had last week, and it was not an offer. We have things to talk about and things to consider, and you know that. You know that healthcare and salary are part of a full picture. It's not one versus the other. The whole thing is part of the compensation package, and I must say, shame on you guys for revealing these details, for violating the ground rules of negotiation, for committing what I'm told is a clear unfair labor practice by presenting partial terms to the members and the public. It's way over the line, and you know it.
Mr. Retschke, I'm going to let you go first.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, again, as I said to you, the conversation about the health benefits is a financial reality, in fact, that has nothing to do with us sitting in a room trying to negotiate. It's simply that in this budget, we have the 10-20 as part of it, and the simple fact that I want to just make everybody understand that we want to try to get that done, but let me just, let me just finish. Let me, let me, let me finish. And the issue is that, tonight being it's the preliminary budget, and only the preliminary, which is a good thing, gives us more time to do some more work on it. The bottom line is that if we don't close that gap, and I'm having a conversation with Horizon, then I need to inform the board that we have another issue, and that's simply what it is. Listen, it's just a financial fact. That's all I'm saying to you, okay? Okay. Well, we can just disagree. Okay. So... Louis, do it. Ms. Holland, you are correct, where's Ms. Holland? You are correct, Ms. Holland, that the paraprofessionals right now are either not IEP-driven or that they're IEP-driven where the, when the child moves on either to a new building or whatever the next level's going to be, the child is not going to need the paraprofessional. And if you heard me earlier when I was doing the presentation, that's why we started to restore a few of those positions, because it's unrealistic. restore a few of those positions, because it's unrealistic with the size of our district and the number of students that are in the district to think that by the time we get to September, we're not going to need some paraprofessionals. So we started to restore them. But yes, the answer is to a couple of questions. They are not IEP-driven, and they are utilized in a way right now that the principals and the special ed supervisors are indicating that they will not be needed next year. So, answer a couple of those questions. We don't. As far as the preschool and the trailers, the move for students to come out of Kelly will not affect the trailers. We were having a conversation about the importance of understanding the overcrowding at the elementary schools, and that we need to continue to do the work. We have the demographer in place now, we're going to have the architect do the building capacity study. It is clearly one of the biggest issues that have to be addressed, because the trailers are getting old, and they need to go off the properties. So it's something that has to be a goal that we continue to look at. The moving of the preschool out of Kelly. As far as the numbers, we are in the process of making that plan, because we, again, the board and I struggle big time with the idea of the preschool in place while additional staff cuts were happening, and that was not an easy decision to make. The reality is that we know when the demographic study comes back, and the capacity study is done on the buildings, that we're going to get the answer, we already know that we're completely overcrowded. And then what are the options at that point? And what are we going to do? Because we've been talking about this since I've been here, and long before I came here, and it's timed, there's something that has to happen. Can't have kids in substandard classrooms in elementary school in those primary years, you just can't have that, and you can't continue to go on. So it has to be addressed, and we have to put a plan in place and get a lot of individuals involved to work through that process, and that will be coming next year and the year to follow. The waivers, there is always that conversation, we've had that conversation, Ms. Holland, about, you know, the entitled to it, so if you take it away, I'll just take it, and then the benefits go up. So that's the wash of that whole mentality.
Mr. Ratzke, excuse me for name. About the preschools, I think it needs to be clarified for the public that it's not a purchase, it's a lease. I believe Mr. Maniscalco said that if we deferred the preschool, we could save a lot of jobs, so please clarify that it's a lease and not a purchase of the preschool.
That's correct. It is a lease, and again, it's in West Orange, and they have made it very clear that they want to work with us, and they are not trying to gouge us. Actually, we're getting the rate per square foot, which is much lower than the average rate in West Orange and in that area in particular. So, again, if we were talking about what we looked at in some of the other schools in the last few years, this would be a no-brainer, we wouldn't be talking about the preschool anymore. But because of the very little cost to the district, and the benefit of going in and starting and not having to do anything in those rooms, and starting the process of eliminating the overcrowding in elementary schools, and listen, I know it's hard. I've been battling this conversation every day with myself about, most important thing is the staff, but we also have to look long-term, and we have a major, major problem with our overcrowding, and it has to be addressed. We can no longer, we've done this for years, those that have been here, those in elementary school, you know that this conversation has gone on, and we can no longer let it go on because of the situation that we're in. Mr. Jacobs, I just, we want to try to help you clarify, but I wasn't quite sure. When you said the financial mistake to bring us here, could you just tell us what you meant by that? Okay. Yeah. Yep. No question. And when Mr. Calabano brought this to me the day he was informed, you know, I just sat back and I thought, how does this kind of thing happen? And again, this is not, this is 1.2 million, and thank goodness they were good enough to say, you don't need it one year, or we'd be in a much worse situation right now. But you're absolutely right, and we have checks and balances in place right now, very much. We have another person who is outside of the district that looks at every single financial piece, and Mr. Calabano can address that a little bit more. We're not required to do that, but we do it because of exactly what you're saying, that it's good to have another person's eyes on it, and somebody who's not attached to the district. And so that's that whole part about an unbiased person looking and saying, wait a minute, this doesn't look right. Want to address a little bit more?
Right. We actually hired a financial advisor, Phoenix Advisors, and I've only been here for just my third year. Since I've been here, we've refunded certain outstanding bonds, and every time we have to go into the system to make a change, I'll go in and make the change, and then I'll send it to the financial advisor, have him double-check that I'm correct whatever I did. So, we do have at least a check and balance when we are updating that system that provides us the death service aid.
Mr. Ratzke, I could just add, Mr. Jacobs, I want you to know, this happened in 2007, none of the current board members or the administration were on at that time, but once this was brought to our attention, we changed auditors immediately, because it was the former auditor, and this is in addition to the outside person that Mr. Calabano just spoke of. So, again, we changed auditors as soon as we saw, because they should have, you're absolutely right, caught that, and they didn't, and now, you know, we're paying 400 grand for the next three years.
Yeah, we could talk after, we'll come back to that. I just want to address Matty's question about the benefits, are you going to have to pay more? The answer is, that's why we've worked so hard to provide another plan, because we understand that you're having more money out of your pocket, and that means you're not taking home money. So, the plan is to try and put a health plan together that does not do that, and to have less money out of your pocket, and more money for the board to have to pay the overall health benefits. Right now, for this coming year, the health benefit cost to the board is 18.2 million, and that is after your contribution, so it's 23 million and some change. So it's still 18, so it's not only a burden on you, it's a burden on the budget when we try to balance the budget. For the two students, you know, the 3D, where's the... Look, I'd like you to do a couple of things. You just informed me of something I wasn't aware of, so I'd like you to have a conversation with Mr. Moore, and myself or Mr. Mendez will pop up, because I'm hearing a couple of things that were addressed last year, and in my understanding, they were supposed to be fixed. So, we can have a little more time, I know this form is kind of difficult, but I'd love to hear a little bit more. And certainly, you know, when we're saying, this is what you need to teach in a certain classroom, there's no excuse for you worrying about, you need to go get things so you can do, there's no excuse for that. And that's why supplies are in budgets, and, you know, we, while we're trying to reduce certain things, the most important part that we don't do is trying to eliminate that piece of impacting the student. Because there's a lot of comments tonight, aren't we here for the students? And the answer is number one, absolutely. So, it's hard when you have a deficit like we have, because eventually, you're going to hit the bone, and when you hit the bone, you start affecting things you don't want to, and so, if you don't mind having a conversation with Mr. Moore tomorrow, and either myself or Mr. Mendez will come up, and we'll listen a little bit more to that, same thing. I appreciate, where's the young man who was speaking as well? Very happy you're going into the field, and understand that it's difficult when you have two really negative variables at the same time. You have a contract that's not settled, and you have a budget where people are losing positions. Very, very hard. And understand, there's no greater profession than what you want to go into, and the idea behind it is you change kids' lives, like teachers changed your lives, you have the ability to do the same thing. And there's nothing more gratifying than that, and I will tell you that, you may not know it for 10 or 15 years, but when that kid becomes your age, or comes out of college, or becomes 25, 30 years old, and comes back to you and finds you and said, I just want you to know, those are moments that you never forget, and that will happen, just based on the short time you're speaking up here. Clearly, you have the heart to do this job very well. So, understand, it's challenging right now. Teaching is a wonderful profession, and don't change your mind on that. All right? Yeah, see, that's why we need to have the conversation, you know, we can meet Mr. Moore's, and we can kind of look at things, we can invite, you know, a couple of our teachers in there. I don't have that specifically in front of me right now, so I don't know exactly what that would be. But again, when you're talking about the 3D, you know, that's kind of separate, and those kinds of things really can't be cut because it's a specific class, but we can certainly have that conversation. Ms. Perot, you were asking about the number of classrooms currently, it would be six, and again, we have a couple of different options that we're just not quite ready to put out there, because part of this is, are we having this information? Is it going to stay in the budget? Working out the final details with the organization, and then, while we're doing that, we're also planning about what's the most effective thing to do for our kids. One of the things I spoke about Monday night was having the continuity of students to be able to stay in one school in the program and continue for the K5, and it's very hard, you know, as a parent, as a child, as, you know, whatever the situation is, when you can have that student stay there, and you really know them, and know how to help them succeed every day, every year, it's a lot better than them moving for the third grade, fourth grade, fifth year to another school, and then moving again for sixth grade, then moving again for seventh grade. So there's some real benefits to it, but the finite just isn't there yet that we can share yet. You know, this is a, you know, this is one of those, you believe what you want to believe with the bank cap. Understand where you're coming from, that, as Mr. Calabano said, you know, you use it this year, you don't have any next year. And I keep stressing the idea here that it's nobody's fault. Health benefits go up between 8 and 12% every year, and additional costs keep going up, and you only have a 2% cap. So, there's only so much money in that pot, and the bank cap is, you kind of rely on that when you need to rely on it. So, yeah, I'm a little worried as well, but the bottom line is, we're trying to do what we need to do for this year, and look forward and plan and do what we need to do. Let's see. Mr. Scholz, the preschool mandate obviously is required for special education students, kids that are classified coming in. Our goal is basically three-fold, to service our students, and to open it up for an integrated program that would allow for a lottery system of Gen Red students to be part of that as well. We know that there's great success with peer models. And then three, really trying to look at preschools, and eventually, the district's going to have to build into their plan about having preschools at every building, because we know the importance of that early learning. So, that's where we're looking to go and what we're looking to do. Mr. Kramer, listen, I'd like to listen more to your proposal about the 8-20, you know, we can certainly do that, I'd like to hear more about that. And agreed that, you know, the board has a very, very difficult job when it comes to the taxpayers who are saying, stop the bleeding, and then they're trying to balance about keeping the district in a positive light and keeping the programs and staff that need to do. It's a very tough position to be in. Somebody, I think it was Ms. Brown, asked a question about privatization, where's Ms. Brown? No, no, we would, the issue, as I mentioned to Ms. Holland, is the, they're not IEP-driven paraprofessionals. And again, as I said before, I'm realistic, you know, to think that when you have 7,000 students, that you're not going to have kids either in district or moving into the district who are not going to need one. So that's why we started to restore them. As far as the cuts at the board of ed level, again, we keep this very broad, but there are at least two positions from central office that are part of the reductions right now. And again, there may need to be more, so we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Ms. Woodson? Some of the technology, where's Ms. Woodson? Ms. Woodson, some of the technology that we cut out of the budget, we have a lot of different labs and a lot of different rooms that require technology in the high school. We have specific programs that require certain things to have within that device. Some of them can't do, the programs can't be done on Chromebooks, they have to be done on desktops. For instance, we have multiple Cisco labs for the kids who are in the Cisco program. We evaluated that, we spoke with the supervisor, and she originally had replacements for all three of those as the computers are starting to age out, but she looked at it carefully along with Mr. Santiago, the director of technology, and they were able to say, we could do one lab this year, and then we can kind of build on that. Now, you know, you have to be careful with that concept, because as technology ages out, they also break down. And when you're expecting labs to handle, kids are coming into those labs every day and running very high-quality software and programs, you got to have the technology that can support that. So, lots of examples like that. We sat down on Tuesday morning, and we brought everybody into the room on Tuesday afternoon, and we just had real frank, honest conversations about, here's what we're dealing with. And supervisors and the building administrators were outstanding, we sat down and they started to scrutinize and say, if I could get this one, I can, these can wait for next year. And again, because of what we're dealing with, that's what we're moving towards, but we have to be careful, as Mr. Ziggy said, there are projects he wanted to do three years ago that are still in the holding pattern, and there are certain things that just can't wait, so we really have to determine what can wait and what can't wait, and that comes from the professionals who do that every single day. As far as the grant writer, and you were referencing the STEM, we have been working with, we don't have a, we don't have a district grant writer, we outsource that service, and we're working with those individuals. And right now, we're focused on three areas. We're focused on STEM, we're focused on technology, and we're focused on preschool. The one thing that everybody has to realize is, it's a very time-consuming process, and they have been willing, we have some money that's available for the grant writers to actually write them for us, and we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're looking to get in grants. We're not professional grant writers, they are, and we can have them do that. We're talking about smaller grants, our supervisors are taking that lead along with Mr. Mendez and the other individuals, and going after them, because they're not quite as complicated, and you knowing about grant writing, you got to have the right language in there that meets what the requirements are. And then the other part of it, you got to be very careful that you're not setting yourself up for down the road, because now you have something in this budget that we're cutting out, and it's something great and everybody loves it, but now we can't fund it. So it's a very fine line that we're starting to address, but those three areas are major areas. And, look, the hope is, you know, two months, three months from now, when we get the results, that maybe we do get, and we can support some of the costs for those new STEM teachers. We don't know that yet, but that's certainly one of the goals and the hopes. We talked about the paraprofessionals, and yes, it is illegal to cut paraprofessionals that are in the IP for one-to-one, but as I mentioned, that's not the case, what we're dealing with. Let's see here. You know, you talked about the dance 2 class, and this is, again, that very fine line about what do you not promote, and then what does it affect overall, versus something that you don't want to lose, and it really is making that very hard decision, and looking at the, that has the least impact on students. And so ultimately, the dance class is very successful, and there's great interest for it, for kids to want to do something different. And there's been a cry for this for many years, to have dance, not to mention the requirement we were supposed to have it, but more importantly, the interest level. So, that's why we made the decision to go ahead and put Dance 2 in, because of the interest level from the kids. Mr. Calavano, you want to talk about the individual seeing the budget on, online?
Actually, the budget gets submitted to the county office. Once the county approves the budget, I'll be able to post the advertised, there's a "Do Not Advertise" section on the budget, so all that information will be posted on the website. There's a, there's a portion of it that indicates "Do Not Advertise," because when you post for your public hearing, you have to advertise the "Advertise" section of the budget, but there's another part, because the advertise is really a condensed version, but then when you look at the "Do Not Advertise," it's, it goes into further detail on the account, so that, we're going to post the entire budget.
All right. And we can't go back and forth for right now, we can talk afterwards. And, and Mr. Albert, just to address, again, Jeannie, thanks for your comments, and we definitely looked into that. Mr. Albert, it kind of goes back to what I was saying to Ms. Woodson about the Culinary Arts. Now, that is a very specific program we have, and it's, it's part of the CTE program, which is a state-recognized program. It's, it's something that if we want to be certified with the CTE, we have to have that class. The Dance, you kind of heard what that was, the Chromebooks. You know, the, the issue, again, we, we really talked about the K-2, and, and that was an, I think, option two, and I've kind of put that out of my brain, but, you know, that was one of those that, how do we expect kids to be prepared in the intermediate grades of three through five if we, and, and how do we expect teachers to get kids prepared for what they need to do if they don't have the devices that they need? So, we have considered different options with the K-2, but, you know, the one thing I've said for a very long time is, in my opinion, we start at the wrong end. We, we give everything to the upper grades because we know they're going to utilize them and utilize them well, but the foundation is down in the elementary level, and if we do it well there, everybody above them is going to prosper, including, you know, the teachers, the administrators, the, the kids, and, and everybody, so, you know, that, that's why. The Honeywell Guarantee, there are guarantees built into that, and if they don't meet them, they absolutely have to reimburse that money to us. I, I don't have it in front of me, but that's something certainly we can talk about, if you want to look at it a little bit closer. And then the process for this timeline, again, it's a preliminary, and that's all it is. It's that Mr. Calavano has to present the budget to the county tomorrow, and changes can happen from tonight until May 1st, the board adopts the May 1st budget, and that becomes the, the budget for the 17, 18 year. Clarify the paraprofessional. So, yeah, the, the question was, is it, it's illegal to cut somebody who had, and I said, "Yes, that's correct." So, but these individuals are not IEP-driven, so they're not assigned to a kid that has a one-to-one, they've been utilized, I'll give you an example, where you might have a, a class that, you have one student who has moved into the class, so now you're at max, maybe it's six kids, and you're not allowed to go to seven without a para or another teacher in that room. So, a student left the district who had a one-to-one, they were nervous at that, they thought another student was going to come into that setting, into that classroom, so they kept that para in place. Ultimately, the kid did not need a one-to-one, and that para sat in that room, as we called, they called an overage para, and within that, the person's not assigned and does not, not, not need to be there, because we're not violating the law, they're right at the number they're allowed to have in the classroom. So, it's situations like that. Ms. Mordecai?
Mr. Calavano, if you could just go over our budget process, I don't think that question was answered. Someone asked, "How long ago did we start?" And I know we start with a zero-based budget from each school building, if you just want to clarify when we started, I think you started in October, November?
Yeah, let me begin with it, because we, we start in the early part of the wintertime, and we have conversations, one of the slides I had were projections for staffing and students and, and different things like that, so we start to have those conversations in the early winter, and then we get into full swing. The principals are very well aware, through Mr. Calavano, that we go back to a zero, we don't keep things in the budget from the prior year, they have to justify why they're putting them back into the budget, so there's a justification system in place. We need to purchase the science program because we have to meet the mandate of the next-gen science standard, that's a justification.
Thank you. I think both, I think both students are gone, but I just want to say, it's great to have, oh, hi there, it's great to have students come to the board meeting and express yourself, I'm, I'm so very proud of you, and I'm glad that you're going to school for art history and education. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. Okay, I think the administration pretty much answered all the questions to all the, the questions and all the comments. And at this time, I would like to ask, I would like to ask if my, if my colleagues would like to make further statements. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Can you, we, can you discuss the ramifications of not submitting a budget tomorrow?
Mr. Calavano?
I'm sorry, what was the question, Mr. Schwartzbaum?
What are the ramifications of not submitting the budget to the county tomorrow?
The ramifications are that my name and my certification's on the line for that, and that's not something that I would ever do.
Actually, the budget was due Monday, so we, Mr. Rutske called the county superintendent and got approval to hold this meeting tonight, and I, and I have to submit tomorrow by tomorrow morning. They actually indicated that I need to go back tonight and submit it before midnight.
But what are the, I, outside of your personal reputation, I just want to understand, are there any?
No, it's not personal, it's my certifications on the line, Mr. Schwartzbaum.
It's the state-of-New Jersey timeframe, it's, we have to submit it.
We would also be in violation under, if you're following the, the Q-SAC. We would have a number of violations, administrative violations, and I've, what the ramifications are beyond that.
And we actually got the extension because of the, the snowstorm last week, that really wasn't a huge snowstorm, but, um, because of the snowstorm, a lot of districts asked for an extension, so we were lucky to get an extension. Mr. Robertson, do you have any further comments?
No.
Mr. Charles?
No, I have nothing further.
Mrs. Lab?
I, I just want to respond slightly to Mr. Delgado. I was surprised when he spoke about being respectful. The last time I saw Mr. Delgado at a meeting for negotiations, he pointed to every member of the negotiations team, "Shut up, shut up, shut up, shut up." His last words at that meeting were the most vulgar of expletives to our health broker, and that ended the meeting. So, I was just surprised, and of course, this evening, my comments were approved by our council. I'll, I'll just leave it at that, so, that's all I have to say this evening. If we need a vote, Ms.?
Yes. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Calavado, actually, no, I need a motion for, to vote on the preliminary budget.
I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson, thank you, Mrs. Lab. Mr. Calavano, roll call vote.
And this is number one, number two, and number three under budget.
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
For the issue on the budget, the preliminary budget, I'm going to vote yes, but there's a lot of work that has to be done from now until, um, the final budget is, and, as I said earlier, I state committee with the other board members of the administration, as far as whittling this down a little bit more. So, yes. Mrs. Lab?
Yes, and again, we know there needs to be work done, and that's why we have the next month afterwards to address other issues once this preliminary is approved by the county.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
No, given the fact that what has been stated numerous times, that the 1.3 million dollars is not, we have no idea whether it will or will not be accepted, I think we need to go back and make changes to eliminate them. My vote is no.
President Mordecai?
Yes. And, and if I could just respond to my colleague, we have from now until May 1st to continue working on the budget, so even though the preliminary budget is submitted tomorrow, the final budget is May 1st.
Ms. Mordecai, step forward. Mr. Schwartzbaum, so, based on the one point, are you indicating we have to go back and, and cut the 1.3, what, what do you, I, I just need to have clarity on the direction?
That's what he's saying.
Yes, what I'm saying is that, based upon discussions this evening, that the, we, we baked into this budget a 1.3 million dollars savings in health benefits, that, what I'm hearing is that that is not something that we should be putting into this budget, based upon, it has to be negotiated, we don't know the, the, I don't know what the likelihood of the outcome, and given that, we need to take that out of the projected savings and adjust accordingly.
Okay, so, I, I just want to, again, just so we have direction moving forward.
So, so to be?
No, no, I, I understand, Mr. Schwartzbaum.
So, if the ramifications, if you want on a dollar basis, I'll, I'll go through it.
No, no, I, I, again, I just want to make sure I, I'm clear, so, because we're going to keep working tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Given that this is the preliminary budget, the purpose of this was to vote on the preliminary budget, understanding that we have to go back and do more work, and understanding that if there's an inappropriate assumption, that, you know, we can also address that and go back and do more work, we're supposed to be at the point now, we've had the discussion, that we vote, and then we go back and do more work.
However, however, however,
Until May 1st.
In decision-making, and, and I just want to address this, in decision-making, one doesn't take a, you know, you, you do something that's called expected probabilities. When one looks at any decision-making, one looks at what is the probability of an outcome? And when we put together this budget, there was a high degree of, of assumption that the probability that this could be assumed that it would take place. If now we're hearing that there is a high probability of an unlikely outcome, it's not a good decision-making, that, that's all I'm saying. This, this has nothing to do with, with the educational budget, this has, this has to do with basic decision-making, and in any decision, you don't go in, just as the woman said, you don't go and buy Gucci when you can't, when you only can afford Gap. We know certain things, and what, are we fooling ourselves here? In, in other words, accept the fact, the, the, these, these are facts, these are assumptions, and we have to do, and whatever the, however, the ramifications, whatever the ramifications of that, so be it, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, you made great points, and these are things we need to go back and discuss. I was still really talking to your standpoint of Robert's rules and protocol after the vote, you made great points, you're an excellent analyst, and you bring valid points to the table, you know? So, just from a standpoint of protocol, it's supposed to go the other direction, discussion, then vote, and then go back and do the work, but thank you.
I was asked the question.
I did ask for discussion.
More discussion after the vote.
I did ask for discussion before the vote.
Before the vote, yeah.
Yes.
I did, yes. The vote was yes, 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 no. Correct.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it happily.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone, get home safe.